I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mrs. Sander, can you call the board, please?
Mrs. Cockhill?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mrs. Inteheart?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Knicker?
Here.
Mr. Broman?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here. Mrs. Dahlquist, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States. To God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. A pleasure to see you all here tonight. First, public comments on agenda items. Are there any? There are none. Then we move to one action item, which is the adoption of the 2012-2013 budget, which has been posted now, and we had our public hearing at the last meeting. Dr. Harris or Mr. Farley, you want to give us a little presentation?
Yes. We do have the budget to be approved this evening for the 2012-13 school year. We do have one minor correction than the information that was originally put out on the board report. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley now, and he's going to explain the details behind that correction, and then I'll comment after he's finished. Mr. Farley?
Okay. Thank you. As Dr. Harris mentioned, tonight is the night we are asking the Board of Education to adopt the budget. In the board report that was put out electronically, one of the items that we mentioned in there was relative to the transfer and how the state perceives the transfer of money that the Board of Education approved back in July of funds into the O&amp;M fund, which was what was recommended by our attorneys as part of the process. For, to back up a little bit further, back in the spring, we identified some targeted projects that we wanted to accelerate, which included the Bauer-Burn work, which is almost complete now, roof job at Wheaton North that was very much needed, some paving projects at Sandberg and Monroe, and we have a bid out right now for Wheaton-Warrenville South on the auditorium, which is also a high priority item. We were using those funds in order to get those projects expedited as quickly as possible and take advantage of the remaining proceeds. What we've done and updated since last talk, the state form is shown here, and as you'll notice, it shows a balanced budget. And what we did was we worked with ISB to make some corrections to how we booked the expenditures and the fund transfers. And what ISB recommended was the transfer to O&amp;M was fine, but they were recommending that we transferred back to the former site and construction fund, the capital projects fund, for those designated capital projects. So at the next Board of Education meeting, we'll ask the board to approve the transfer of $960,000, which is targeted for those projects, and transfer that back to the capital projects fund. Sounds like a couple steps, but it's the cleanest way to do it, and it's something that ISB has recently allowed school districts to do, and I think it's actually for the better, so it doesn't make your budget appear as though it's out of whack because you're using funds from another source. So with this budget, we are moving the $960,000 associated with those capital projects from O&amp;M. The expenditure is now going into that site and construction or capital projects fund. We are also reducing one line item in the O&amp;M fund by $23,000 for some capital purchases that we're able to do. All of this brings it within the state document into balance. The state doesn't look at the IMRF Social Security Fund when they're figuring out a balanced budget, which is interesting also in this. But we are balanced on our operating budget, which is, we always constitute that with everything but site and construction and the bond and interest account. We take everything else, which is ed, O&amp;M, trans, IMRF, Social Security, and working cash. We're balanced with all of those. We're also balanced with the state document, which takes into account ed, O&amp;M, trans, and working cash. So we are good to go from that standpoint for tonight. With those modifications, we'd like the Board of Education to approve the budget.
And again, I'll just, I want to thank Mr. Farley for following up on this. This is a unique situation that we just don't have very often, and when we started to pluck the numbers into the state form, it was frustrating, and it showed up that it was imbalanced, even though, you know, that it is balanced. We do have the money available to do the projects we've dedicated to do. So we did work through that with ISB and to make that correction. So the state document actually reflects what is going on here, and it doesn't change how we're spending anything, doesn't change anything like that. It's simply trying to work with the Illinois State Board of Education to show that our budget is imbalanced. So I would recommend the budget moving forward to replace this document that you have in front of you. You do have a copy of it here at your desk that is a paper version. Mr. Farley has the electronic copy, and we can place that into the action item as an amended, the state document. Okay? That's the only thing that we're changing, just to show that it is balanced. If there's any questions to the board, certainly we will answer them.
Questions, discussion, either about this or the budget as a whole? We work, you work so hard to get the balanced budget, it's good to get credit for it when we get it. So that's all that this is about. If there are no questions or discussion on that, we do have a resolution. Ken, would you read out the resolution that goes with the adoption of the budget?
This is a resolution to adopt the annual budget. Whereas the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 200, DuPage County, Illinois, caused to be prepared in tentative form a budget, and the Secretary of this Board has made a tentative budget conveniently available for public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action on the budget. And whereas the public hearing was held as to such budget on the 12th day of September 2012, notice of the hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all of the legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 200, DuPage County, Illinois as follows. Section 1, the fiscal year of this school district shall be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to commence July 1, 2012, and to end June 30, 2013. Section 2, the following budget attached and made part of this document containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each fund be the same as hereby adopted as the budget in this school district and said fiscal year. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption.
Thank you very much. And now can I get a motion to adopt the 2012-2013 budget as presented with transfers from O&amp;M to site and construction in the amount of $960,000?
So moved?
Seconded by Jim. Seconded by Barb. And I will call for the vote. Remember to vote online.
Mr. Broman?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes. The budget is approved.
Just as a note, board members, we do have three official copies here that we need all of your signatures on before you leave this evening, so please see Mrs. Sander before you go, and that we have to file these with the state. Okay? We need actual signatures on those. Okay? Thanks.
Well, thank you. So in addition to money, the other big thing we handle is student achievement. So we're getting two big items in one night here. And so now we're going to move to the student achievement portion. We have a presentation by Mrs. Dahlquist, and then we'll have a discussion afterwards with questions. And if it's no objections, I would say let's adopt sort of a committee of the whole approach to this, so if there are questions, as Mrs. Dahlquist goes along, I'm sure you don't mind if somebody asks as they go along, and thank you.
Definitely. There's a lot of information to be covered.
Thanks. Thanks.
Before we get started, I just will comment. Obviously, this is an annual report that we do, are required to do by the state of Illinois, to share with the board and the community our school report card per se on the state mandated assessments, but we also weave in all of our local assessments along with all of our work with our student achievement. So I'm going to turn it over to Faith at this time, and she will walk through the details of where we're at with student achievement.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. It's very important that we go through and look at our data and get an accurate picture, not only of where we are now, but where we're headed, and also what plans we're putting in place, both short term and long term, to be able to get there. Before I get into the nitty-gritty of all of the different graphs and details, I wanted to reaffirm that we do exceed state averages in all areas. We continue to have a high number of students that are meeting and exceeding. We continue to be really strong and show improvement. Some of the slides and the data that I'm going to go through this evening also show some areas for improvement, but I did want to start out by saying we're doing a really great job. We're above state averages, but there are also some things that we need to work on. So now, as we get into where are we? We're going to look at student achievement trend data. We're also going to look at district-state comparisons, and we're going to look at those famous AYP reports, or adequate yearly progress. And to kind of help along with that, I have this little blue card here that has all of the different acronyms that get used in the AYP reports. Sometimes that can be handy, and I try not to, as we explain to parents, and use this information to use all those acronyms, but sometimes they slip in and you might need that. For AYP, or adequate yearly progress, this is a report that comes out each year, and it's based solely on the state tests. And there are very many different components that go into making AYP. First of all, you have to have at least 95% of the students overall tested, and as well as the different subgroups. The subgroups are listed up there, and as long as a school has at least 45 students in a particular subgroup, those scores are counted into adequate yearly progress as well. You also need to have a certain percentage of graduation and also attendance. None of those are issues for District 200 schools. Okay, so now we get heavy into some of the data. And wanted to explain a little bit about what you're looking at here. We started off with math at the elementary schools. And I need to remind you that in all of these different categories, you have to have the 85% passing, whether it's overall or subgroup. For a little bit of time this summer, it was at 92.5%, and that was on the trajectory with the No Child Left Behind legislation to reach 100% by 2014. The state came back a little bit on that and left it at the same percentage proficiency of the year prior to that. So that's why you may see a little bit of change, and we talked about that at a couple of board meetings ago. So here are the math scores. And if you look through there, there are lots of yeses. We do have two elementary schools that did not make AYP, and that is Hawthorne for economically disadvantaged students, and also at Washington. You may be wondering, for example, at Hawthorne, for the overall category, they had 81.8, and I just got done telling you it's an 85% cutoff. That's because there is a confidence interval. If you're a couple of students short, the state will give you the benefit of the doubt on that. Also, you will see some areas, such as Pleasant Hill. Last year, they did not make AYP in math, but this year they did. But if you go all the way over to economic disadvantage, it has down 80%. That's because another way that you can make yes in a certain category is to reach safe harbor. So if you were significantly behind last year, and you made enough gain, and the state sets those targets, then you also can get a yes, even if you were not at the 85%. So that's why there are a couple of discrepancies where you see yeses in green, but the numbers aren't totally there. So that's elementary math, AYP. Pleasant Hill is to be congratulated because last year they did not make it, and this year they did. Also, if you look at reading, same things apply. I would like to say, and you can kind of look up there, it's real easy to spot where the no's are, and any no in any of those boxes means the entire school did not make AYP. It's all or nothing. And last year, we did have five elementary schools that did not make AYP in reading. You can see that number has gone down. For example, last year, Sandberg did not make it. This year, they did. Last year, Pleasant Hill did not make it. This year, they did. Last year, Madison did not make AYP. This year, they did. Johnson, last year, did not make AYP in reading. This year, they did. Hawthorne is the only elementary school that did not make it last year and continued not to make it this year. We did have two other schools, though, that failed to make AYP this year, but did make it last year. That's Bauer and at Washington. I'd like to address just a little bit what plans we have to improve at Hawthorne specifically. Last year, we went around and did classroom visits and those kinds of things, and looked at our local assessment data. We already knew that we had significant concerns that we might not make this adequate yearly progress at Hawthorne. Staff received that information and worked with me and looked at data, and then invited me in for several days at the end of the school year to revamp how they are offering reading services. Some of the information that we shared last year, where Lincoln had had such an increase, then shared that with Johnson Elementary. They had huge, huge gains. The percentage up there is a 14 percentage point gain over last year, 22 percentage points just at 4th grade, where we started at 1st. So we took what we knew what was working, and then I went to Hawthorne and sat with their staff about how we could reconfigure their resources as far as their reading teachers and their reading time to target an intervention with that as well. Eric Sully has also gone over and spent quite a bit of time rethinking and helping how we would deliver service to our ELL students over there. The staff was great about that. On the last day of school, usually when teachers want to get out of here and have a little bit of time, they said, "Faith, can you come over?" And we spent five hours that afternoon after kids gotten out, and then within a week, we're back, and 20 of their staff members spent another day with me on their own time to go through. They're really vested in this, and they were spending quite a bit more time talking about this on Friday, also on how to deliver better reading instruction and more targeted instruction based on data. Not only for those students that were struggling, but also to get more students to the exceeds level. That also was a concern that we needed to address at Hawthorne, and we have plans in place, and I've just had a data review over there with them as well, and we'll be monitoring that closely. Yes?
I noticed that at Hawthorne, where Hawthorne's falling short is on the economic disadvantage. Do you know what the demographics for that?
Yes. Quite a few of the economic disadvantaged students are also limited English proficiency students. It does not account for all of that, but it is 60 to 70% of those students are also limited English proficiency students.
And what determines whether they're put in the economic disadvantage category as opposed to limited English?
Very good question, and I should have already said this. If you had a student that has unfree and reduced lunch, because that's what economic disadvantage means, and they also were limited English proficiency, and they were also Hispanic, their score would count in all three of those areas, plus the all category. So some of our students carry multiple titles, if you will, and those scores count repeatedly.
One of the other triggers to becoming a category is you have to have 45 students in that category. So for instance, you know, we don't have 45 LEP students at Hawthorne, so therefore that doesn't trigger. But the economic disadvantage does. So that's, you know, if we threw the data up there, you would see consistency in the data, because a lot of those students fall into several categories.
Thank you.
Correct. And to be exact, there were 43 students.
I'm going to say it has to be close.
It is very, very close. And those 43 students make up, you know, a percentage, and if your school is smaller, that percentage obviously is even higher, and Hawthorne is one of our smaller elementary schools. These are the middle and high school math scores. Come out the rest. Yes, the subgroups become bigger, so there are more subgroups to actually report. Some of our elementaries, and if you broke some of these schools into subschools, they wouldn't have 45 students in a subgroup, but the more students that you have at a school, the more likely to have to report a subgroup, and those are more challenging areas to have me proficiency. Yes?
I can't help but notice that the middle schools are all fairly close in terms of their percentage meaning, but the two high schools have a little bit greater disparity between them. Can you talk to that at all?
Sure. And I would like to address the SES component, and I'll show you the reading scores as well while we're talking about that. If you look at the SES scores, and that's the far column to the right, that's the economic disadvantage. One of the areas that I'm continuing to stress with our whole district is how to reach those students. Our percentages of those students are going up every year, and it does take very targeted explicit instruction, which is good for everybody, but especially good for our students that have the lowest socioeconomic status. And North has gone through and has been looking at data very solidly. South is starting to look at that type of data, but there is some work that needs to be done there. Also, North did go through and stop or get rid of their lowest level classes, and that was a process that they had done for year, year by year, and gradually implementing that. South has started that process as well, but they are not as far along with that. As you know, Lori Campos was part of that process at North. She's now putting those things into place as well at South. We have had a conversation as recently as two weeks ago about curving up that process and getting those classes back to at the level that they need to be at. The finals are the same. However, if you group students and have lower expectations at that level, you're going to get a lower outcome. And a lot, it doesn't, it doesn't account for all of the lower SES students, but there is a more significant population of our low-income students in those types of classes, and we need to increase the rigor for everyone and not have those classes available at South. Also, when you're looking at the differences there at North and South, and I'm looking at reading, and also in math, North has done a lot of looking at data and getting in and looking at how they're doing overall. South is working on that, but they need to continue that, and to get in and really know their students by what percentages they have, where are kids that are struggling, how do we revisit that? Some more progress was made at South second semester on creating interventions that are not only just for anybody who's failing in class, but targeting them of those students that don't have the skills versus those students that didn't do the assignments. That is, those are two very different needs, and they started second semester last year of identifying which of those needs there were and personally walking students down to help. Not saying, "We're here if you want them," but I know that the principal and the assistant principals there are personally going and getting a few of these students and bringing them to the access or the intervention time and saying, "We're not going to allow you to fail." Those kinds of things that they're putting in place, while they didn't show up here by April, I am confident are going to make a difference. Questions? Any more questions on AYP reports before I go any further? And you can double back on me. It's a lot to take in, and that's fine. Now I want to look at purely our ISAT scores, and it does have the alternate assessment, but it's a very small percentage of students. Last year, if you recall, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware, not only of our percent meets and exceeds together, but looking at just our exceeds and breaking that information out, because it's there where we need to make more of our growth. If we already have 87 to 90% of our students passing, yes, we need to continue that, but it's that red bar up there of the exceeds that we need to have growth. Also, wanted to remind you that one of the conversations that we had here was that the state is getting ready to change their proficiency levels. There was even an auction for a few months in January and February that they were going to raise the cutoff scores on ISAT this year and report that to parents. We've just gotten an email this week saying that they are going to do that for the scores that we will be taking in March. So what has been proficient on ISAT will not be proficient on ISAT very soon. It will be a much higher level. It'll be the college and career readiness that Dr. Harris has already been talking about, that Julie has already gone through and figured out what the cutoff probably will be, and we've been preparing our staff and our students for what the new bar is going to be. So it's really important to look at that exceeds category, because it's high meets and exceeds that is going to be counting as proficient from here on out. But these are the scores for now, elementary and reading, and you can see pretty static. Over the last three years, overall percentages are 88, 87, 88. Not a whole lot of improvement, not a whole lot of decrease there. If you look at elementary math, similar with 94, 94, 93. Anything that's went in a three percentage point window is really not a significant change. When you get something that's above a 3%, then you can kind of say, "All right, we had an increase," or "We had a decrease." So the one or two percentage points are not very significant. I do want to point out in middle school reading that we do have a decline that stayed there. In 2010, we had 97. 2011, it was 92. 2012, 91. Middle school reading is an area that we need to hone in and improve on. I have just visited three of our middle schools, again, for the language arts visits. I have another one tomorrow. Have conducted lots and lots of interviews with students about the kinds of things that they are learning in reading. And there are three things that we really need to improve on, one of which is increasing the rigor and the difficulty of text, and Common Core will take care of some of that. Another one is explicit instruction on informational text. A lot of the things that I saw were novels, and that's not preparing our students for what is going to be college and career ready. And we're going to need to provide support for our staff on that and also direction. And then also, as you know, we developed a K1 through 2 reading framework, and we talked about the importance of giving students practice time and cold reads and not holding their hands or giving them so much support on a text that they could get by without reading it on their own. Saw quite a bit of that in our middle schools, in our language arts classrooms. This afternoon, and I had some of the coaches behind me, we worked on the grades 3 through 5 reading framework, and we're seriously considering having that be a grade 3 through 8 reading framework to give our language arts classrooms some more continuity between elementary and middle school, so that the types of conversations and the types of rigor are on a continuum and give those teachers that support. And those are things that we want to put in place before Common Core comes, so that they have an understanding of what good instruction looks like, and then put in the standards on top of that. So I am concerned about this particular side, but I also think that we already have identified what needs to improve, and we'll see an improvement on that. The next slide is middle school math. 93, 93, 91. Again, not much change there, but I am looking at the exceeds category. We went from 48 to 45. Obviously, that's not in the right direction. And again, we need to increase the rigor and the explicit instruction for all of our students. And we're working on learning targets, learning on math vocabulary, and I also think that you'll see those scores go up a little bit, even before Common Core hits, because of the work that we started doing last spring and are continuing now. These are the high school scores off of PSAE. I want to caution you, and the graph will show up a little bit later. When you first look at this, you see, "Oh, you know, 72%. Why the dip?" This test is very different from the tests that we had talked about in elementary and middle school. The elementary and middle school tests are based off of Illinois state standards. They are not aligned with the high school PSAE components of the test. This is more representative of what college and career readiness will look like, and when they raise the bar on what achievement and proficiency will have to be on ISAT, you'll see a similar bar from elementary to middle to high. But here, as the test got more difficult, and in math, it doesn't even test the same thing. Through elementary and middle school, there's a lot of, a lot of questions on probability and also in geometry. It switches and becomes the focus of algebra at high school. So that's why you see some of the differences when you go from elementary, middle, and then to the high school scores. So that's high school reading, and here's, yes?
Can you opine on why that is? Did two different departments of the state, downstate, figure these tests out? Did two different departments of the state downstate figure these tests out and they didn't talk to each other? Why such a disparity between them?
Sure. The high school tests, they realized needed to be ready for ACT, needed to be ready for national competitions, had to have correlations between all of those types of things. And they aligned themselves with what colleges would need and also what workplaces would need, they're called work keys. Illinois state standards had their own and did not build toward that or build backwards like you would want to do so that there were incremental steps toward the same goal. High school had the goal, elementary set standards and middle school set standards based off of just Illinois standards, which were not getting to the same place. So yes, the two were not in the same room and did not communicate well on what that is going to be. And you'll see, later on, there's a slide that shows what the whole state does, and you'll see that it's a statewide trend where elementary, middle, the scores are nice, and then high school, the whole state drops. That's one of the reasons that Common Core is being received so well so that all states, right now it's 46 of them, will have the same standards marching toward the same place so that there won't be this miscommunication of how are our schools doing or how are our students doing and then be surprised when they get to high school. Illinois is not the only state that has that discrepancy. And now I want to talk about advanced placement a little bit, and this is impressive. Have to slow down a little bit and look at this. This side does say at North and at South, we have 40% of our graduating seniors getting a 3 or higher on at least one AP exam. That's pretty impressive. I also wanted to let you know a little bit about what's going on at South in math. South with their pre-calculus class, their AP classes, they totally revamped it and rejuvenated having more people come in. Two years ago, they had 45 students that took that AP class. 15 got a 3. Last year, they had 116 that took it and 99 got a 3. That means they went from 33% passing of the kids there to 85% passing. And it wasn't that they made the group smaller so that they were just the smartest kids, they opened it up at exactly the same time. So we're very, very thrilled at what they've done there, and they know what magic it was and are busy getting it ready to be that explicit and have that much vocabulary and that much built-in student independent practice time to go along to their other AP classes as well. I want to talk a little bit about the ACT scores, and they are listed there. District 200 is the blue column and the state is the red. We are declining a little bit across the top. And there are things that we need to do to address that, such as getting rid of some of the lower-level classes, such as doing the things I'm already talking about, will also change this. But we're seeing that the information that we saw in the AYP reports is also showing up here as well.
So obviously, the ACT has a couple of different components in it, so is that sort of slight decline across all of those components or is it more in one area than another?
You are just right on. Here's the next slide. And the first two columns are the 8th grade explore, which is the college and career readiness version of how are we doing toward ACT only taken at the 8th grade. Then the next two columns that you see are the actual breakdown of the ACT scores. And just like you said, there are the four different areas. And as you know, with this document, where we're looking at all of our indicators for college and career readiness, there are cutoff scores that we had already set that we are looking at at the 8th grade and at the 12th grade level. So the percentages that you see up here are the percentage of students that have mastered the indicators that we had already listed as targets.
So am I sort of understanding that correctly, that it's really the English that's giving us a little bit more of a dip there?
And a little bit of science as well.
Yeah, a little bit of science, yeah. Now, English compared to reading, is one of those the writing components?
There is a writing component, there's also a grammar and those types of things that are listed in with the English portion of the exam. And reading is more of a comprehension, all of those components as well. The grammar components is where we tend to fall down a little bit on the English portions. You will... Well, I know my own mother, who's an English, retired high school English teacher, with Common Core, grammar is much more of an emphasis from elementary through middle. With Illinois state standards, it had not been. Now District 200 did not drop the ball there. They had continued to work on grammar and those kinds of things. But now it will be a universal and there will be step-by-step from kindergarten on of what needs to happen with that. And that is a good thing that's coming with Common Core. This next slide really draws attention to that drop-off that I was talking about where the 11th grade test, which is the far right, there's a line that draws where 3 through 8 was Illinois state standards, and then at 11th grade, we have more universal standards as we're getting ready for college and career readiness. And as you can see, the red columns are the state, and we're above the state in every single area. When we get to 11th grade, yes, our percentage of students is proficient, but we're actually much, there's more of a gradient there of how we're doing compared to the state than there is at any other grade level. So I don't want you to walk away with the idea that, "Well, the high schools just aren't doing what they should be doing." They're actually achieving higher than the rest of the state, but their test is very different. And the degree of rigor and difficulty to be able to consider passing on that test is a much higher level than it is grades 3 through 8.
Could I suggest that if you post this someplace, you put a notation?
An asterisk.
Of why that's happening?
Sure.
Is anybody out the streets that's going to say, "Well, you really dropped the ball at 11," but it's completely different criteria.
Right.
That should...
Maybe we should even put it on two separate slides. And clearly say that one is off of Illinois state standards and the other is not. Hopefully, they would be able to see that the state also drops off, but it does take some more explanation so that it makes sense.
I was just going to comment, the state is aware of this issue. I mean, it's blatant and it's obvious in every district in the state of Illinois. What they're doing, and Faith's going to talk about this a little bit more, is they are aware of this, they are looking to make changes to align the elementary and middle school to the high school ACT PSAE. So that is in the works. We're not quite sure when and how it's going to happen. It's quite a bit of money that's involved when they revamp their assessment system. We've been hearing rumors, but I'm not quite sure to what level the state's going to be able to deliver on that. But they're aware of it, they're trying to address it, so we do anticipate a different assessment coming soon. The ISAT's going away, just a matter of when.
I mean, won't they almost have to do that if the state's adopting Common Core?
It's in line with it.
So the standards will change based on Common Core, so why the assessment has to change?
That's correct.
Right. They're just delayed as they go through and have nationwide companies try to figure this out. We were supposed to have drafts of all the assessments September 11, 2011. They're not here yet, so there is a delay. And putting all of that together and deciding which company and how that's all going to work. And then also, a lot of the testing is going to be online and trying to figure out across all of these different states, or even just think of the different levels of support that would be needed within Illinois school districts of how to have all third graders take a test online and make sure that computers and internet and all of those things are ready to be able to do that is a huge undertaking.
It is, and there's a huge price tag too. And as we all know, the state of Illinois is not in a positive fiscal situation, and I know that's part of what's going on here. They don't have the money to get it done and/or the staff and/or the resources to make it happen. So it's why they have not given us a solid date that I've seen on when and if this may happen.
So I just want to check and make sure that my understanding's right, but the PSAE is the ACT and work keys, right? Are there additional parts to it or is it just those two parts?
Just the two.
So that, will that part stay the same with Common Core or is there some talk about even changing what the assessment is at the high?
That much is pretty much stable, but everything is gray and kind of up for grabs. But I don't anticipate with how much they're going to have to do to get everything else ready that they're going to change that dramatically. That's already fairly well aligned, it already has the emphasis on algebra, it already has the grammar components that Common Core has, but the Illinois state standards didn't. So I don't see that changing a lot. Before we go on to the next slide, I had him put up the math slide, and you can see the same exact thing happens as with the reading graph where we've got 92, 92 going along, and then grade 11, we're only at 73%. But if you look at where the state is, the state is only at 51.6. And as I talked about here, not only does the difficulty increase, but the emphasis is different. Geometry and data and measurement are huge, 3 through 8. Grade 11 is about algebra. With Common Core, you'll now see the emphasis is going to be algebra from the beginning. All right, as I... Oh, just go ahead.
Do you feel that that emphasis on algebra is as it should be? I mean, in my life, you know, as a math person, I feel like I'm using algebra every day.
Right.
But is that the appropriate emphasis, that everything be more geared toward that mastery?
Yes, it is. Being able to identify patterns, being able to systematically look at algebraic relationships, and these are things that you can even talk about with a kindergartner or a first grader as you're having them create patterns and doing those kinds of things. They need to be able to recognize patterns and even identify them with formulas. Those are the types of things that you use in everyday life, much more than probability, much more so than very involved formulas of geometry. Those kinds of things and memorizing formulas and doing that, we can Google that, we can find that information if we need it. Being able to think algebraically and see relationships is a more complex skill that really needs to be taught, that you can't easily just refresh on and you do use more often. So my background is math and I do agree with what Common Core's doing. All right, I already had this slide up, but I just wanted to say again, we are doing very, very well. There are lots of strong points, there are schools that are showing some dramatic improvement, and we've identified what those improvements are so we can have them transfer over into other schools. But there are things that we need to work on. But it's my opinion that in order to continue to be great, you have to continue to identify what your weaknesses are and work on them. So as I talk about those weaknesses, it's not at the disadvantage of saying, "We're not doing a great job." Very proud of the staff, very proud of the work that's being done here at District 200, but there are things that we need to improve on. And that's what I want to talk about next. We've said that college and career readiness and 21st century learning skills are what we want all students to do. We are not at all students, and we need to put things in place so that we are getting more and more of our students from early childhood all the way through graduating seniors of having the skills that they need to be able to be successful after they leave us. So this is the fun part, this is where I want to talk about all the things that we're doing. I really think that our efforts are circling around these four items. Increasing leaders' capacity to improve instruction in student learning. Because what I know or what other people know, we have to collectively know and work toward. And we have to continually build others' understandings so that we can have more of these conversations throughout all of the districts. We also need to provide teachers with staff development time, and it needs to be focused on student learning. Professional development time where they're sharing or talking about worksheets or talking about what teachers do is very different than talking about what students have been able to master or what students have learned. And that is the shift that we're going through right now. And that change in talking about curriculum, which is all the stuff that teachers do versus standards of what we want students to be able to master. And they're both really, really important, but the focus is different if you're talking about what did students learn versus what did I do to teach. And that's going to make a huge difference, and that's the professional learning committees that we're talking about. Common Core standards is coming, we're in a hurry, and that is going to really raise the bar, especially for informational text, especially for algebra. And we have some work to do to be able to be ready for that. But that also will help us get there. And there's Common Core standards across 46 states, so there's lots of resources and information out there to help us get there. Also, students that transfer into us are going to be coming from schools that have Common Core standards in place. That's very different than Illinois right now where we're kind of all over the place or having to, if someone comes from a state other than Illinois, they could be on a totally different track. So this will help us. We also need to integrate technology with instruction and use all of that for speed as well as motivation as well, so they're comfortable using technology as they go through and graduate. A lot of times, they're helping us with that, and we need to utilize that as well. So I'm going to take each one of those, and I want to talk a little bit about principal ability to improve instruction. One of the things that I really enjoy doing is sitting down with principals and their school data, and I do that twice a year. And we have really difficult sometimes conversations about subgroups and about the data that they have and about their college and career readiness. And we talk through and look at school-to-school comparisons so that they know how they're doing from different subgroups compared to other schools within the district. We also look at teacher-to-teacher comparisons so that if you have a rock star at 5th grade math, I can figure out who that is and find out from the principal, "What is that teacher doing?" And then it's better to be the principal that's the 13th data review than the first because by then, I've already figured out and had conversations and we can share that. And a lot of what happened last year is as I went from school to school and was able to highlight, then they started calling each other to find out what had happened. And that's what needs to happen in District 200 because we have pockets of wonderful teachers and staff that are unbelievable at what they do. We have to build communications and systems so that that knowledge is able to spread. And that happens through the data reviews. I also share areas of concern then and talk about, "Do you want to go with me to observe another school? Do you want to come see another way of doing this? Do you want to have any of my staff come over and talk at an institute day?" And then I'm also able to share with them, because I have a team that goes around and comes with me to classrooms, and I say, "Well, this is what I saw when I walked through the classrooms. This could be a reason why this is happening." And then provide some of that feedback kind of in a mirror back to the principals so that they have a better idea of what other schools are doing. Yes.
When you talk about teacher-to-teacher, can you also see in that data when you're talking to the principal, you could see progress between kindergarten and first and second, third, and then this group of kids suddenly drop off at fourth, the common denominator may be a teacher, and say, "This teacher seems to be creating a gap between third and fifth," or do you have that much granularity of the data to get to that?
Yes, thanks to Julie O. and all the different things that she is able to do magically with data, yes. We have that from student to student and can look at, "Well, this consortium of second graders as they went through," we can look in specifically and say, "Structure on informational text was a problem in this second grade classroom, and it's now exhibiting in third grade." It's not just, "Well, they're low in reading." We can get specific enough to say, just on a specific, being able to draw comparisons between key ideas in between informational texts, where was the strong, where wasn't that, and then have that go on. So yes, getting very, very specific. One of the interesting things that we do a lot is looking at girl-boy comparisons because there are different learning styles that match for girls and some that are for boys. And if you have a group of women elementary teachers, and yes, I was one of them, people tend to teach the way that they learn. And we have to be really careful that we're meeting all students, and that data is very, very telling. And have had quite a few conversations at some grade levels where girls were far exceeding boys. And we do have some grade levels where it's the other way around. And there are instructional practices that are best suited for girls or for boys, and we talk about those and then make sure that they are doing a balance at both of those.
So who's the clearinghouse for all these great ideas? If you say, "You know, you're having a problem with X at 5th grade," where, when do we get to the point where all the 5th grade teachers in the district can say, "That's how I solve that problem"?
That's a very good question. We are reinstituting grade level meeting. We are reinstituting grade-level meetings. I did those last year with kindergarten, first, and second grade, where we have all of the district's teachers together, and we give a common focus of what that would be, and we have a few people share out what are those best practices. Also, at the principal meetings, we will say, "Hey, this is what happened." A great example of that is what the third-grade team at Lincoln did two years ago, where they split up and did flexible grouping, and their scores were phenomenal. So then, we've shared that at the principal meeting, that's one of the things that Johnson did then, that caused a great increase in scores. And it's really through the principals then, that we have that sharing, and then they share out. We still need to get better at having it be everywhere. Also, wanted to note that this year, the statewide student achievement is going to be twenty-five percent of principal evaluations, and that growth piece. So we spent time this summer looking at what those formulas would be, to be able to look at adequate growth for students from the beginning of the year until mid-year, because we have to have the evaluations done before we get any of the state results back. And that is a change as well. And that is going to, you know, cause more principals, I think maybe more so in other districts than in this one, because we've already been talking about instruction a lot. But that is going to cause more of a focus for some principals, to be more instructional leaders in looking at that. We also want to give a lot of professional development to our principals. So a half of each of our K-12 meetings are going to be on professional development, on how to be instructional leaders, and how to implement professional learning communities. And that's not just me. We have a team of principals that went to training with me, and they are reporting that back, and taking turns presenting to their peers as well.
So without going into too much detail, how, do you have that framework for what student achievement is going to constitute?
Yes.
Sort of briefly tell us what-
Sure. We made the decision to really focus in on reading for the growth at elementary through middle. And the reason that we are doing that is, we are in the process of switching over to Common Core math. And we have many of our elementary classrooms that are piloting new math materials and new math assessments right now. And it would be very difficult then to have an evaluation of twenty-five percent be on a test that has not been tested, or that only some students are using. So the emphasis is really going to be on reading now, and then next year, it will be reading and math as well. We are looking at our district local assessments, how the students came in at the beginning of the year, toward how they will be doing by mid-year in January, because we have to have the assessments, the evaluations done by the first of March. And we're gonna look at two different things. We're going to look at the growth that is there, but it's also difficult, if you already have ninety-eight percent of your students passing, to be able to show growth. So what we are looking at is a two-pronged approach, and either one can have you score well. Where you have a percentage of your students that are at college career-ready, not ISAT, because that's not a high enough bar, but at college and career-ready, so that can get you a high mark. Or if you have enough of your students that are making a huge amount of growth towards that, that also can give you a high score. So that we would look at both of those things. And we are looking at every single grade level, other than kindergarten to include, which is a lot more than what we had to. But the elementars, and we thought, "How are you gonna pick one grade level? You know, let's look at them all, and incorporate that into that." Middle school is also going to be the reading language arts focus, on how that would be. At the high school level, we are looking at two different themes. We are looking at English finals, so because we have to have something from the beginning to the end. And then we're also looking at their intervention classes that they're doing for the lower, lower-level students, to see if those students are making progress.
So that's a component in the principal evaluation, what you just went through. And so therefore, the principals are being held accountable for growth in those areas. For instance, at the high school that we had a question before, we've identified, there's a significant need in some of those targeted areas. We're gonna look specifically for changes in instruction and growth, you know, as it pertains to the principals and the assistant principals' evaluations at that level. And working with them to build the capacity to make it happen. That's the expectations.
So then, for instance, at the high school level, these are then common finals that are, and so who's putting together those finals? And the reason I'm asking is, you know, assessments, local assessments, for a long time have, you know, been not-
Correct.
-the most popular thing in the world for-
Correct.
-our staff, so I'm just, and have had some difficulties in terms of being, you know, aligned with courses, not having the correct answer keys, I mean, just some practical difficulties.
Right. We did have a very interesting, in-depth conversation about that. They are common, because we don't want to have one high school have a different final and have the high school principal evaluations, you know, it's gotta be apples to apples. But then we also had all the department chairs in in August, as we talked about the professional learning communities and the new essential standards in college and career-ready, which finals were more closely aligned to what needed to happen for college and career readiness? And what ones were we ready to say, "We can do this with," and which ones needed to be revised? And there are many, many, many more that need to be revised than there are that we are ready to keep. The list became pretty short, and that is a lot of work that needs to be done this year and into the summer, as we identify all of those essential standards and increase the rigor at all of our classes. The English finals were in the best shape, so that is why we went with those, and where they're aligned. And we had already done, thanks to Julie, been able to go back and look at the percentage of those students that passed that test, and the percentage of students that passed that component of ACT, to know if they were similar. So because we didn't want to just pick a test that wasn't aligned, that was either much more difficult or too easy, to give an accurate portrayal of where we're going. So Julie is able to do backwards trend data, and make sure that that correlation is there.
The difficult part is, or do you see it being difficult, where, with the principals and everyone being assessed, and then, but wanting them to all share their information, and you work with each other? So to me, that's a real culture issue of, "Oh, my gosh, I have the best idea, I've gotta share it with everybody," versus, huh, I wanna, so I hope, that's tricky, but how are you gonna?
That's one of the conversations that's going on everywhere. And as long as we make it very clear that everybody can pass, you know, we're not leading them from the top to the bottom. Like, the person who had the most growth gets the biggest raise, or the highest evaluation, or any of those kinds of things. We've set the bar and said, "This is what growth looks like, this is what it's gonna be. We're all going to support every one of you and your schools to get there." So we can still approach it as a team, and have that, you know, how wonderful it would be if all of our principals had the highest marks on student achievement. And it still can continue to be a collegial effort to be able to do that. Now, teacher evaluations are also going to include student achievement data in the years to come. And we're gonna have to make sure that as we do professional learning committees, they're still facing this as a team, not as individuals in isolation.
Good point there, and this kind of references the whole SV seven paralegal law. And you, the community and board probably heard some of this discussion play out in media over the last few weeks with CPS. And they didn't go into detail, but that is basically what was the bargaining issue that was going on there. And what you heard the mayor say was, "We are holding principals accountable. That's because of this change, and because of this law." And what he, and now in CPS, the issue was, the teacher component was put in place this year. So there was, there was issue there with, you know, that accountability component. Since we make AYP, in the law, we're not obligated to make that change until 2016. So we have a couple of years to phase this in. And we are working with our association on that, and we will probably, we have to do it by 2016, required by state law, where all teachers' evaluations are inconsistent here with the principal component. However, we will be working with our association about possibly doing some pilot scenarios, and doing some different situations to phase it in over the next couple of years. That's, discussion's ongoing, has not been finalized, but I know there's interest on our side, and definitely on the WWA side, to pilot some scenarios, so we can bring some validity and reliability to these assessments, to make sure we are measuring what we think we're measuring. So that, just a side note, there was a little bit of the issue that was playing out in CPS this past year, because of the change in this law, which we were required to implement the component here with the principals this year.
Hi, I also wanted to talk a little bit about additional leaders, because principals are not the only leaders of instruction. And a whole team of people gathered together and working on the same types of things with instruction is really, really powerful. And we needed to redo some of our school teams, so that they're really focusing on student learning and instruction. And I've got a few examples there that are new. We do have elementary instructional coaches, but they only come, I don't want you to think they have brand-new positions, that's, they're not elementary instructional coaches in that way. They are reading teachers that come and meet with me for about two hours, twice a month, and build reading frameworks of how all this is gonna be. And last year, we built K-1, two, was received just wonderfully by staff, on having the district really be aligned on what good instruction looks like at K-1 and two. We're now in the process of doing it for grades three through five. We made a lot of headways today, and we're gonna be way ahead of schedule, I can already tell, on the three-five framework. And then, that group of coaches, what's kind of nice is, they each have two elementary schools, and they go back and talk with their staff about, "Well, does this make sense? Does that not make sense?" And then go to their sister school, and we get feedback all along with the process. So when we have a finalized framework, we've already had hundreds of teachers have face-to-face conversations with someone about it, so that we can do this training and go forth. We've now released the K-1, two responsibilities on that reading framework to the principals and the reading teachers at each school, and have come up with what are the expectations that we want all K-1, two teachers to do this semester. And the reading teachers and the principals are monitoring the implementation of that. We also brought in all of our new teachers, that are new to the grade levels at K-1 and two, and provided training for them on that as well, because they have, may have missed out last year. So we're building capacity there. Also, we redesigned some of our elementary instructional teams. Teams have had school improvement teams, schools have had a potpourri, if you will, of different teams. And there was some need for some alignment in how those teams communicate, and what their real focus should be, is on student learning and how to improve that. So we redesigned some of those, and I spent a lot of time with principals, talking about how do we reorganize that. And to their credit, they really, most of them have jumped on board, and have really figured out and are working through how all those teams can be more efficient and work collectively on student learning. We also created a district instructional team last year, because I think it's important for the district level to model what we want schools to do. And to have a whole team of people with, and Joanne co-leads it with me, because it's really important for special ed, ELL, and gen ed to have the combined efforts on what we are doing. And schools need to see that at the district level, so they also can model and use that at the school level. And we look at data, and talk about what needs to be improved, and then we also decide design teams. After we've looked at all the data, all right, what do we need to do? Well, we obviously needed the Common Core Language Rights Team, we obviously needed Common Core Math, we needed a social-emotional learning team, we also created a professional growth and design team. I'll talk a little bit about what that group has been doing. We also created a technology, a design team. And those teams all feed their communication back to us, so there's an alignment of what is happening across the district with all the different initiatives. Otherwise, you can kind of get in silos and have things almost in competition of each other. So we want to model what should happen at the school level, only at the district level, and that's why we created that team. Also, brand-new this year, so excited about this, middle school instructional teams. Middle schools have had leadership teams, but there were more coordination organization teams, their focus wasn't really on student learning and instruction. And there is a whole lot of management organization stuff that has to happen at a school. And we have to get that done, and student learning. And the middle school principals, we got together, I don't know when that was, March or April, and we talked about this idea, and it would involve having some conversations with the union, because we would do different things with the team leaders. Everybody was on board. Isn't that great? So we put that all in place, and got that set up, and every middle school has an instructional team. We provided training over the summer of what that would look like, and now they are going through that process, and how to make student learning the focus throughout all of their meetings and conversations as well. The summer training date was when we brought in all the elementary portions of instructional teams, and the middle school instructional teams, and a hundred and fifty-some staff members came and spent a day with me and my team, and Julie also on data, to talk about what does it mean to be an instructional leader? Look at data, and what are things that are really critical to put in place at schools and systems to have that happen? And we're gonna continue some of those conversations as well. And then, just recently, on September thirteenth, we had ninety high school team facilitators that came in and spent the day, and that training was co-done, kind of between me and the high school principals and assistant principals, as well as a few department chairs. And we talked about professional learning communities, and data, and how to focus in really on essential standards, not on curriculum. Again, the focus on what we want students to learn, not just on what teachers do. And then, I'm sorry, I could go on forever on this. Anyway, with the training of the U-200 teachers, we wanted, we've had U-200 courses before, but it was, there were lots of things that were offered, but they weren't totally aligned to district goals. So what we worked with, and Beth, and Joanne, and Rod, and I got together and talked about, what are some key areas that we really want to provide targeted professional development in? We identified technology, professional learning communities, Common Core, and social-emotional learning standards, and meeting the needs of diverse students. So then we surveyed the staff at the end of last year on what they would want to take, got some feedback on that, and then learning targets of what we want staff to learn from those classes, and asked teachers, "Who wants to teach this?" And we did have over twenty staff that bravely raised their hands, and said, "We will work with you to design these courses." So we brought them in, was that just last week? That was just last week. And talked to them about what needs to happen for adult learning, and what does that look like, so there's commonalities between all of those different classes. And we now have a way, it's called My Learning Plan, that staff will be able to go on electronically and see all the courses that are available, and sign up for them. And that, we're really excited about being able to coordinate those efforts, and then reoffer those classes, but having them, when we're talking about Common Core math, making sure that we're all talking about the same things in Common Core math, for example. All right, professional learning communities, all certified staff, and I can say that with certainty, but it took quite a bit of doing, is on a professional learning community. That does mean that there was a lot of coordination for some of our singletons. For the, for example, elementary PE teachers, there may not be any other person in the building that teaches elementary PE, so we need to have district teams to make sure that all that has happened. And that took quite a bit of organization. We're talking, as I go through the data reviews, a portion of that is talking with principals about how PLCs are being monitored. And then, the institute day, which is just the day after tomorrow, will be focusing on professional learning communities and essential standards at all of our schools. We also have created a survey that we're going to give to all staff mid-year, so that we will have data on that, and be able to report that back to you. Common Core standards is another big part of the work. Math, as you know, is coming. Math will be implemented a year from now. We are in the process right now of piloting K-5 materials that are aligned to Common Core, and we'll be making a choice. There are eight mathematical practices that are the same in Common Core, from early childhood all the way through graduating seniors, and the district is taking one a month to focus on that, and we're sharing electronically. And we've created a website for staff to be able to share across the district, things that they find about that core mathematical practice. It's also going to require us to revise the elementary report cards, because the math standards have changed. So I've had the first meeting of that group, and that work needs to be finished. We're in the process of finishing all the standards for grade six through algebra, and they're pretty well along, but we need to tweak a little bit of the pacing guides. Language arts, just started. We've had the first meeting of the huge committee that involves pre-K through twelfth-grade language arts. And the timeline that we have up there is to go through and review the standards by November, we'll be finalizing our template of what that will look like. The goal by March is to share all those standards initially with the pre-K through eight staff. The high schools are a little bit further ahead on this, because they have gone through and developed the ninth and tenth-grade English classes already aligned to Common Core, and are piloting those. And we wanted to make sure that we set where we were going solidly in place, and then are building the other grade levels to be up with that. And then we'll continue- And then we'll continue on with the junior and senior level classes as well. We may need to purchase some materials. I don't think we're as near a need at the elementary level as we were in math. We may be able to do this with some supplemental things, not a whole rethinking of all of the different materials. And then by summer, we would be creating district assessments, so we would be ready to pilot those standards and some of those assessments by next year, because it's the fall after that. So it's math next fall, and then the fall right after that would be language arts. Language arts affects every single classroom in the district, because the content people, even those who teach science, who teach social studies, teach math, have language arts standards in reading, writing, and speaking that they will need to master as well. So the language arts standards touch every single classroom that we have. Integration of technology, I already talked about the U-200 classes, and then the, part of the new contract is that we're bringing back district-level meetings so that I can pull all of the math departments together from all of the middle schools, all of the science, those types of things after school. And we intend to have a technology showcase at those meetings. We have some phenomenal teachers that are really integrating technology. We want staff to see that in action and go from classroom to classroom to be able to see that. We believe that that will spread. Also, as I do Common Core training, we're going to integrate technology into that so that they see how we can use that, that it's not just an outside tool, and that they have to think of how they would apply it. And then our Friday focus is now going to have an emphasis on instructional technology as well, so that people can share that way. That does spark a little bit of competition or showcasing, and then there are also no District 200 people that they can go and ask for more ideas. Then, this is a very, very busy slide, that's why it's in large print, but this is kind of the work plan for the next three years in those four areas. I've already talked through quite a bit of that. Can highlight just a few types of things where we were, the following year, when we do 2013-14, that's when we'll implement math. We will be creating an integrity tool so that principals know what to look for, to know that Common Core has really been implemented, and they can go through and use that when they do their walkthroughs. We're also going to need to provide ongoing training. You don't flip the switch, put on Common Core Math and say, okay, we're done with that. There's going to need to be further professional development as we go along through that process. There will be things that we thought made perfect sense as a committee, that all of a sudden, when you give it to somebody who's only reading it, it wasn't part of all the conversation, that we need to have more communication on. So a lot of that professional development, even though we flipped the switch and we put it in place, will have to continue.
I've got a brief comment, and certainly allow the board members to weigh in here. I think there's a couple of things to keep some historical perspective here. Over the last several years, three to four years, the curriculum renewal process was put on hold. Professional development also for our certified staff, administrative staff as well as teachers, has been highly limited. And that was in direct relation to the budget scenarios that we've had. And what you see here now, and what Faith has went through, is a renewing of this process. It's time. And I do think, you know, again, sitting in my seat, you know, from a bigger perspective, looking at, you know, you see some very flat testing scenarios, maybe even some dips in some areas. I do believe that is a reflection of, you know, a delay. That's why we cannot delay any longer in some of these areas, where we have, you know, we had to do it. We didn't have a choice. We had to reset some things, and we had to make some tough decisions. And, you know, we put those things on delay. As you can see now, we're full steam ahead, and we are reinstating some really central curriculum work and instructional professional development, and as well as incorporating a little bit of a culture shift at the building level with the implementation of PLCs. That is a change, and it's going to be a journey. It's not going to, it's like, use your terms, you know, just flip the switch. So I wanted to just bring a little bit of summary there to what maybe some of the reasons behind, you know, we looked at some data, but then we're also talking about, you know, our planning as we move forward to how to continue to stay on top of those expectations when it comes to language arts and math, which is the core of everything we do. So just wanted to make that comment and bring it, you know, again, into some perspective here of where we're at. We certainly want to start to see, you know, the data we looked at here this evening, remember, that is trailing data. So it's always trailing what's happened in the previous year. And really, truthfully, it's the previous couple of years. I mean, it really is, you know, a collection. So hopefully, as we start to move forward, we will, and it may not be next year, we may still, but over the next couple of years, we absolutely should start to see some positive trends in some areas. And so therefore, I just wanted to bring that, you know, comment forward, and certainly open to board members' questions or comments as well.
Brian, I'm glad you raised that point, because first, I've been really amazed with the progress made at Johnson in reading and in coming into compliance with the ISATs standards and No Child Left Behind. But it would be unrealistic for us, would it not, to believe that sort of improvement can be expected? For example, when we focus on the high school, to have more of those students who are meeting standards, jumping up to exceeding standards, that's going to be a process that should take a couple of years, or we should expect to take a couple of years to achieve. Is that realistic?
Yes, you're going to see that, especially for moving needs to exceed, there are some sudden jumps that you're going to make, and then there's going to be some plateaus, and then after that, it's more incremental jumps, you know, smaller. But initially, when we put in professional learning communities and we really get specific about standards, the year that that happens, and we're in the process of still developing it, it's going to happen at different courses at different times, I do expect to see a pretty significant jump in one year.
If you remember back in the springtime, when we had this initial conversation about the professional learning creation, about that culture shift of, at the building level, I showed you some examples of high-performing districts, you know, about where, and you started to see some trends, and it was trend over time, where as they implemented, you started to see the differences. And that's why in every school, in every grade level, or every department, or every course team, like at the high school level, they move at a different pace, depending on, there's a lot of factors. You know, teachers change, you know, demographics of students change, there's a lot of intangibles that play into that. But you still want to look at trend data out over time, and it does take several years to start to see some of that, especially in a high-performing district, which is what we are, to be able to turn those things around. One of the AP stuff is just flat-out amazing at the high school level, and that's been a targeted effort. It's been three years, I believe, three to four years, actually. And that's been over time here, and that's been intentional and very targeted and very purposeful. And you saw after the third year, the significant jump there. And we were actually, remember last spring, we were recognized by the college board for a district that's flat-out unique in that area. And I do think, and you saw this year at Johnson Elementary, very targeted, you know, change in instruction, a change in how they do things. I think, you know, and Faith mentioned, we have a couple of other schools now, Hawthorne, Washington, a couple of other schools, and I know the principals and the staff there are very engaged and intrigued about what's happened in some other places and why not us, type of conversations going on. And middle school, we have some very targeted, I believe, I call it low-hanging fruit, some things that really will make a difference. I do believe our electives at the middle school level, we've ramped those up this year. That's going to pay off in our trend data. I really believe that, because that instruction and that curriculum that's been designed for those elective courses will make a difference, I believe. Or it may take, it may not be in one year, it definitely will be over the next couple.
When do we anticipate those, the completion of the elimination of our level courses to happen at South? Because that was something that was discussed before I even came on the board.
Go ahead, I'll judge.
This year.
That has been a very direct, pointed conversation that Faith and I have been involved with, and we are targeting the students specifically that are in that situation. It's on the radar, and it will change, no doubt about it.
And then to reflect back on that whole history of, the idea is to raise the expectations, not to punish anybody by making them, putting them in a class that they can't succeed in. That's never been the point.
You're absolutely right. The instruction has to change, and that's an isolated situation, but it's a very, it's an easy to address and an easy-to-fix situation. And Faith talked about it earlier. You know, North had made those decisions several years ago and had made some change, had been, you know, ahead of that curve. South is definitely trailing. However, South is very aware of it and is right on target to make those changes.
And piggybacking on that conversation with raising expectations, the AP classes, tremendous, and obviously, that's because more kids are taking courses, there are more courses, AP courses available. But my question is, are we now making the next step of making sure that it's a broader group of students who think about taking those AP courses, as opposed to just having the same expected group take more of them?
We are seeing a much greater expansion, and even providing support during the summertime to get students ready to be at that level, to be able to take that class during the summer bridge program. So we are really working at expanding that opportunity to more than just the traditional set of students that are in all of the AAB classes. Yes, and we're not just getting more of the same students proficient, we're getting, we're expanding the group and raising the percentage of students that are proficient, which is one of the reasons that we were recognized. The high schools are excelling at that.
That's the amazing piece, and Faith pointed that out. It's not only, you know, the ends increasing, not just the score, but both, and that's what's pretty significant. If we can do it at that level, we can definitely do it with kids that are targeted in the SES categories, the English language proficiency categories. I mean, it just, the focus needs to be there, and it is, it will, it is there currently.
Maybe in some future report, I would love to see how we track that, or how, what that actually is, that increase. That might be one of those components that we talk about in terms of the scorecard, how are we doing academically? How great is our pool of students who are taking advantage of those types of things?
We have that in here, it's published in our report.
Oops, we can do that.
Barb, you're thinking about the high school profile. We had that discussion last spring, and, you know, you're absolutely right. The data's available, and we certainly, it's indicated on there. That is correct. Just three quick things. Where do you get, when you're in all these different committees and all these different things, and to come up with new things and implement, do you, like, pull, just out of curiosity, pull from resources that are nationally or statewide, or, I mean, I can't imagine how you can just whip these into place?
Really loaded question. There are educational research and what's been going on and what's been proven to be effective is out there. There's not as much of a guessing game about what it takes, to that you have to go find it. When I started out as an elementary principal, a lot of it was, well, where can you get this information, you know, and trying to find that? And leadership and curriculum instruction, I think, has really changed from trying to find it, from trying to focus it and communicate it. Because you can Google anything and have 48 different ideas about how to do this. And it's easy for groups to get all unorganized and unfocused, and you just keep coming back to, well, what is student learning, and what are the things that we know that work? And keep coming back to that. And what really works at the K-2 framework didn't take much of a twinge to get to where it needed to be, to be at 3-5. Once you have processes in place for people to share what is best practice, the work on committees tends to go faster, because you've already got a process in place. So what we did together and put on Common Core Math, we'll use some of those same learnings for Communication Plan on Common Core English and Language Arts. So yes, there are some great books and some resources out there, but it's really figuring out what systems work within District 200 and making sure that they share and expand. So yes, bringing in new, but also reining people into, no, we've got to work on this. Well, that would be great, but no, we've got to work on this. And keeping people focused, because there's so many things that can be going on, that you can easily do 100 things and not do any of them well.
And I'm sure, I'm sure South is going to share with North their AP thing.
Yes, the math department chairs talked ago.
And then we have such a generous community, how we can bring them in to help with, in any way, and the business community, or just one-on-one.
The elementary report card is going to take quite a bit of input and needed, because the main purpose of that is to communicate student progress to parents. So we have a few parents that are on there. I'm going to be looking through the district PTA to also get information that way. And we're also going to need to do quite a bit of educational piece, once it's even produced, on explaining it to the rest of parents. And we need looking for different films and different ways to do that. I do think that we could utilize business partnerships and those things more. Right now, yes, money is an issue, but it's really organizing time and organizing that, and that's difficult for outside people to help us. You know, if there are money for materials and those kinds of things, we've definitely, as we go to informational texts, there are a lot of our school libraries and classroom libraries that need some support with that, and definitely, you know, we're looking at some different things through DuPage Literacy to perhaps provide some of that as well. But that is probably an area that we could work on more, of trying to have businesses and partnerships know more about what we are doing.
Well, I was, I mean, money, it would be great, but how about, would it be more of an inconvenience to have parents come in and a set schedule, and you're going to help one-on-one with this kid and/or DLL, or it just, or is it just make it too confusing?
And at the school level, yes, that, you know, they've got some targeted things, especially at elementary age, students that need help with fact fluency, students that need help with letter sound recognition, students that need someone to work on sight words with them. There's a lot of that opportunity. It's more school-based though than it is district-based, and for those types of opportunities. And definitely, if there are people out in the community that would like to do that, contact your local school, I'm sure they can put you to work.
You know, one other comment I wanted to make to answer your initial question here, where do you find the ideas, the resources? One, I believe, positive outcome of NCLB, which I know the board has repeatedly heard some of the negative things that comes out of this and some of the things we have to comply with. One of the positive things I believe that has come out of NCLB is there's been a significant amount of time, effort, research dollars, and everything on seeking out scientifically proven and data-proven practice that improves instruction and student learning. Now, the key, as Faith said, is being able to funnel the correct pieces into wherever our needs are in District 200. Every district's a little different, trying to reach that resource or that strategy and fit it into our niche. One thing that has increased here in the last five to seven years in this district is our SES population. You know, we're almost 20, was it 23.5% free and reduced lunch in this district. So in 10 years, that has doubled. That has doubled in 10 years. That's reflective of DuPage County, and it's clearly in District 200. So there is different instructional practices that must be in place to meet that increase in our demographics. It's a change in our, a change in our demographics. Hence, some of those conversations we just talked about at the high school level. Instructional practice looks different for kids with different needs than it does for kids that have a lot of, that walk in the door every day prepared to learn. Some kids don't walk in our doors every day prepared to learn. They haven't eaten, they haven't had the support at home, for whatever reason. We have to take a different approach with kids in that way. And some of our schools have made those changes. That's what we're talking about. It's very complex, however, we need to continue to change those practices and target some very specific, you know, culture changes at some of our schools to be able to meet the needs of our kids, to continue to have the impact on student achievement.
Thank you very much. This is, I don't want to cut anybody off to you.
Good. Good, because I haven't said anything.
Okay.
See, one of the things that I, Faith, thank you for the instructional coaches. I think that's an ideal way to bring the teaching element into a school service center environment that changes a top-down approach, like you will do this and we are going to do that. And I've heard from a number of teachers that you are very welcomed into any school at any time to bring all of this to them because you want their participation and they feel that way. I think that's the way we're going to grow our student engagement and we're going to grow everything that we want to do to have these students achieve at a higher level. And the coaches, I think that's just a great idea to have them, you know, involved in as many ways as possible and take that information out. And I'm really excited about hearing that that's going to really blossom and really going to take off at the middle school level as well and even at high school level with facilitators and so on. It's a little more difficult, I would think, there, but still in all, it can be accomplished, you know? I have a couple of questions about the PLCs at the elementary area. They are coming a half hour early every day. Are these kinds, are those times being used productively to your knowledge in terms of what's going on at the schools? And then secondly, comment or somebody comment about the early start time. We only had one at the high school, but comment, we've had two, okay. Yeah, late start, right. A comment about how those are going and what was accomplished and what the feedback's been.
I'll start off with the high school piece. We've had two delayed starts, and I did go to North and South on the first one because I wanted to see how the students, how many students were there at the beginning and whether we had enough supervision and enough seats for everybody. And both were very organized, there were plenty of extra seats in the commons area where the students were there, and there was a great student to staff ratio. Lots of kids were talking, working on homework. It was really calm. We had a little, we had to educate a few people on what it means to get through the parking lot with the construction with the rain. We had quite a few students that arrived just a few minutes before class was going to start on the delayed start and we had some tardies and we had to clean that up, but that got better by the second time. What the staff worked on that first time, and it was the same at both of the high schools, is they had an overall presentation of what it means to write norms, where we're going to be going with essential standards. We had a notebook that every single certified staff member got across the district that explained some of those. And you probably remember a little bit from the conversation at opening day over at the church. So they went through that and then they broke into departments to talk about, this is where the meetings are going to be, these are the facilitators. The high schools are very, very large and to figure out just who's going to be on what PLC because you have people who teach a course more than one course, and they needed to do that now. Then in between that time, we met with all the facilitators and got very specific about what it looks like to write an essential standard, what the commonalities and what the best research says about what that should look like. And the next delayed start was when they actually met for the first time just in their PLCs with their team facilitators to create the norms and begin that work on essential standards. On Friday, they're spending a majority of the day in those same PLC groups and being able to continue that work. So we're not just using just the delayed start time, we're also giving a majority of the institute day to that. It was very well received. I talked to the administrators as well as to department chairs, and then I also wanted to just talk to some teachers about how it went. And they're a little nervous about essential standards and rightfully so. It's a difficult piece to master, but it's more about getting in the process and the conversation, and they're not used to having those conversations. So I'm fine with that they're feeling a little awkward in how this is going to go. I would be shocked if they didn't. But it has started out well. And they do have a process, all the, every team is keeping minutes and agendas, sending that forth to the department chairs. So if there are teams that are stagnating, we're going to know about that and put support into place either through the department chairs or through administration to address that. You also asked about elementary. We have elementary coming in early, although elementary people have been meeting before school, after school, at once on all of these things prior to the change in the contract. So one of the things to figure out there is, well, how are we going to just do it at 8:30? Can't we meet more than that? And that's the common question that we've had to address there. And we've said, it's okay if you want to meet more than that. And the majority of the buildings, 12 out of 13 of them, have decided that they're going to meet more than that half an hour time on their own with their PLCs. So yes, that time is being used well and they're even going above and beyond that. They also are, we have a common template that they're using, all the elementaries to be able to keep minutes and keep track of all of that. The training on the 28th will really be how to write a good essential standard because you can write one or you can write a really great one, and we need to continue to work on that. And they're going to have some opportunity to share that from grade level to grade level as well at each building. So progress is going well in the first month.
I think all these things are really going to contribute to that trend in student achievement and continue to improve on that every day. And I think, I think we're going to see it sooner than later. I hope so, but, you know, sir, I believe so, but, you know.
With some teams, we've already seen it. It'll just be, when do we reach the critical mass that that many teams are doing this really purposeful work?
Faith, I had a couple of questions in just your recent comments. Writing essential standards, can you tell me how that fits in with the professional learning concept that we talked about? Because I'm not, you know, clear on that.
I've got eight PowerPoints if you want to go up to, anyway. Yeah, I could talk about this in my seat. The four key questions of professional learning communities, the very first one is, what do we want students to learn? And that component is writing those essential standards. So you have the standards that we teach, and that could be Common Core, that could be District 200. And then you identify which of those things are very, very key and essential. And which of those are we going to work collectively to have 100% of our students master? So you have all the things that you teach and they are important, but you have a narrower set of those that are critical either to two years down the road, that's one of the things that we look at, whether it's relevant to another content area, and then also whether you're going to need that-